I moved out of the way already.
I'd like to call this special board meeting, I guess, open. And if you please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for nominations for the position of chairperson. Can I open the floor? Any nominations?
Do you pick a side of the room?
I pick a side of the room? I pick this side of the room.
We usually rotate, so it doesn't matter. Whatever. No. I'll nominate Angela Chastain for chairman of course. Pass.
Pass. Wendy Follnback.
Pass.
Pass.
Okay, we have two people nominated for board chair, Wendy and Angie. So I'll pass out the ballots. Should I do it independently? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give you one?
You give me one.
So I have... So there are three ballots for Wendy and four for Angie. So Angie is elected the chairperson of the New Milford Public Schools Board of Education. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open the floor for vice chair. I'll start on this side, Tammy.
Eileen Monahan.
Pass. I'm sorry. It's your turn.
Pass. Pass.
Pass. I'd like to nominate Joe Baile.
Pass this? Did you get the vote?
I'm sorry. That was a good stock.
Thank you. Thank you. Every day's a good day. There you are.
Okay, so we have two votes for Eileen and five for Joe. So congratulations, Joe. Okay, we'll open nominations for secretary. And we'll go back to this side.
I'd like to nominate Wendy Follnback. Pass.
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 Pass. I just gave you two. Sorry. I gave two? Okay.
Vote of six, one. Wendy Follnback will be our secretary. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. Take nominations for assistant secretary. I'm going back on this side. Oh, there, side.
I will nominate Eileen... Yeah, Eileen Monahan.
Pass.
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 Pass. Pass.
Eileen. Sure. Pass. Who makes the... Wendy's secretary? I just... Just make that. A little bit. Looks good.
And it's unanimous, Eileen Monahan. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. As part of Cabe's recommended best practice for boards of education, it is recommended that boards have an annual recognition of its approved statement of integrity, policy 9005, and code of ethics, policy 9271. You will find both of those policies in front of you. And could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some of them.
Second. All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you.
I call the meeting to order. It's 7:30. Thank all the board and teachers and everyone for their flexibility with the weather on Tuesday. We appreciate everybody coming out again tonight. First order, Pledge of Allegiance. Stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Parker for recognition.
Thank you. We're excited tonight to have Brandon Zhang with us. Brandon, can you stand up? And Brandon didn't want to speak to you, but we want to recognize Brandon. He wrote an essay for the VFW Patriots pen contest, and I asked him if he wanted to share a little bit about his essay, and he really didn't want to share. But I said, well, can you share with me what your title was? And he said, what makes America great? And I really wish that you would at least tell us one thing. Could you tell us one thing, Brandon? That, what did you think was the best thing that made America great?
I think the thing that makes America great is like freedom and like equality given to all people, like no matter like race or gender or whatever.
Oh, thank you, Brandon. We're so proud of you. Congratulations.
And has a special recognition.
Congratulations.
And continuing with our recognition, do you want me to move on to the stars?
Yes.
All right. I always love this part, is the night we get to celebrate our employees. And we are changing it up a little bit at this meeting for the next few meetings, because oftentimes when we have nominations, some schools are to the point where they're repeating people while the bigger schools haven't yet had a chance for people to be nominated. And so we thought we would just throw everybody into a big random selector that we have. And instead of doing it by school, we did it by just the people who were selected to make it more fair. And I'm excited tonight that Morgan Taylor is here from Ingersoll, because it's our star of the month, and we're excited that they have a car for our employees. So at this time, I would like to recognize Kristen Jarro. Is that correct, Kristen?
Jarro.
Jarro, I'm sorry. Had the wrong emphasis. The person who nominated, you can go ahead and come up, Kristen. The person who nominated Kristen said that she always seems to know what is needed in the moment. Her smile and kind words made a stressful time of year easier for all. Thank you, Kristen, for all you do. And Kristen is a social worker at the high school, and we're so appreciative of you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Sarah Herring. Hi, Sarah. Sarah's a seventh grade math teacher at Scattapoke. And the staff member who nominated Sarah said that she clearly understands that all children are unique and learn differently. She is a teacher that puts her students before anything else and goes above and beyond to make sure they succeed. She has an incredible passion for teaching math and makes lessons fun and accessible for all and interesting. I really appreciate her. Congratulations. Chuck Lynch, New Milford High School Social Studies teacher. Chuck always goes above and beyond in every aspect of his day and job. He is one of the kindest and most pleasant people to work with and makes great connections with kids. So said the person who nominated him. Congratulations.
Prusy.
Prusy. Carolyn is a para educator here at Sarnoble. Carolyn is a stellar para professional. She treats everyone with the utmost respect and is always the go-to para for support. She always knows exactly how to handle a situation, and they said you do so with grace. So congratulations. Okay, Tracy, I am just not doing really well with my emphasis. So, robedo? Robbedoo? I'm sorry. Tracy works at New Milford High School, and she's the backbone of the Special Education Department. So says the person who nominated her, and I've heard that, too. She is a secretary, receptionist, therapist, counselor, copy repairman, behavioralist, and more. She respects the issues that often come across her desk and makes the families know there is someone on the other end of the line who cares. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And the next person we want to celebrate is Kristen Stoll, and she's a science teacher at New Milford High School. The person who nominated Kristen says that she is the overall nicest person you will ever meet. She is always more than willing to help her students better understand the material and work through extra problems. She is a keystone to the Science Department and willing to help anyone in the department. Her school spirit is always present during Spirit Week, where every day she decorates the rotunda by her room with the theme of the day. Wow, congratulations.
You want to?
So you can get a little box for your recognition. And inside is a star in one of them. And that person gets to drive the car from Ingersoll, Brandon.
From Ingersoll from the smiley. Go ahead and open them.
Okay, Morgan, ready for this?
It's supposed to be a smiley face.
Yay! You won!
Everybody has a star. Congratulations.
Awesome. Because you are all stars.
Thanks.
It's always so confusing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's nice.
Thank you.
We light them up pretty.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute recess, and there are some refreshments, and we'll let the staff get some photos, and we hope they'll come back and join us. Welcome you back. And we will open up with public comment. Have anyone signed up?
Yes, we do.
Well, we have Ms. Chris Stewart.
Thank you very much for letting me have a few moments. I'm here to talk to you and let you know the happenings of the music department, the band department, with New Milford High School. Mr. Sizdek was very busy doing playing assessments of the students in preparation for the end of the semester. He wants me to let you know that we had a wonderful concert last week. It was the jazz band, the wind ensemble, the concert band, and symphonic band. And I don't think I'm, oh, and the orchestra. So every member of the playing band community at the high school had, had a chance to play for a packed audience. It was, it was a wonderful concert, one of the best of the year. He also wants me to let you all know that we have a combined concert where we invite the eighth graders up in January. They get to play some music of their own, they get to play with the high school band, and then that gives them a taste of what they'll have to be able to play. He gave me some stuff to talk about, so I didn't have a script. So they all get to play together, and they get a little taste of what it's like to be in the high school. The String Fest-
And Guard Show that's coming up on February fifteenth. There'll be kids who had tried out for regionals at the Northern Regional Concert in New Britain. And that's in January, that's usually Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. And then a lot of kids will also be trying out for All States. So they're probably going to be practicing over the break their music for All States. So, happy holidays, thank you very much for supporting the band and music program here in New Milford. It's really rewarding and very important to a lot of students. So, thank you very much, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Chris.
Okay, anyone else? No public, I guess not. Next up is the PTO report. The PTO rep was unavailable this evening, but she will submit comments and those will be included in the minutes. Student representative.
I'm sure a lot of you are aware that our winter break is starting up tomorrow. So excited. The incoming freshman night is January sixteenth at seven PM. And the snow date for that is February sixth. And that is where parents and students of the upcoming grade can come, kind of like check out and hear about the programs that we offer at the high school. As, same before, January twenty-third is the combined concert where the eighth graders come up. That's always a good show. I remember I was in that years ago. And it pretty much sums everything up, and I wish everyone a happy holiday.
You too.
Okay, approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And abstentions? Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, the special meeting minutes from December third, two thousand and nineteen.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion?
Joe's second.
Yeah, I mean Joe is what I have. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And any opposed? And abstentions? Okay, we will now move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Parker.
Thank you. For my report tonight, I wanted to focus on our newsletter that goes out at the end of each month. And I, I wanted to highlight a few things in here that are really worth people's time to look at. And the first thing I'm excited about is the partnership that we have with the John J. McCarthy Observatory. And the students have been going over there, different students, math students, language arts students from the high school. But most importantly, I saw is that the observatory has asked any students, anyone who gets a telescope for Christmas or during the holidays, if they bring it to the observatory, then they will teach them how to use it. They can use the observatory to, to use their telescope. I think the partnership with them is, is awesome. And I, I got to visit it and it is, is quite incredible that we have that opportunity here in New Milford. So I just wanted to, that's our cover shout-out to the observatory. And then another article I'd like to point out and celebrate is, our students have done incredible community service projects. Pre-K through high school. This month, they have been focused on giving and they have raised thousands of dollars for the Connecticut Children's Medical Center, as well as bringing mittens and hats and all sorts of giving. They've gone to nursing homes and performed, just been a lot of outreach. And it, it warms my heart and there's an article in here with pictures. So I, our students are incredible and I think we, we don't always know the, the degree to which their community service is performed. And I really celebrate that. So, I, I hope that you take time to look at that. I also wanted to point out that while she's not here tonight, we have a math teacher at New Milford High School, Linda Servone, who recently won a Math Educators Award from the Associated Teachers of Mathematics in Connecticut. It's quite a prestigious award for her to receive. I know Alicia was there, do you want to tell them a little bit about the award?
It was wonderful. She was nominated by a fellow colleague at New Milford High School. She received the award not only for what she does for the students in her class, but how she goes above and beyond working with her colleagues, providing professional learning, sharing resources, all the outreach that she does in addition to her own classroom instruction. So it was really exciting, I was there to actually see her get it live. We took some pictures, I was able to congratulate her. And it was just a nice day for her to be recognized in front of her math colleagues from across the state. It was a large conference that was actually run, the chairperson of that conference was Courtney Muir, who was our math coach. So she, we were excited that we were all there to see her get that reward, it was well deserved.
And we'll celebrate her, but I just wanted to share that that happened very recently. And then another achievement, our New Milford High School Athletic Program was recognized for their achievements in sportsmanship. And they've done many things, this is the second time I believe they've won the award. And I, I think it, it says something, I don't know if you have any information? Did you participate in anything that you would like to share with us about the sportsmanship?
I, I played varsity guys soccer this season. And I would say it's an award that many schools do get it, but then again, not many do. And that's because a lot of the schools can't have, I know that award is based off of how your players interact on the field and then your fan section and how they act towards those players.
The fans have to sign a commitment, don't they? To, that, that, how they're going to behave, they commit before they go to a game for how they're going to behave. And that's, that's rare, you don't see that very often.
We started that, yes.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's quite a celebration and to be recognized for that says a lot, as again, to our students' character. Another thing that's going to be happening January fifteenth, with the snow date of January twenty-second, is a transition workshop for any special education students in middle school or high school who needs, I guess, want to learn the ropes. Laura, do you want to speak to that just a little bit about the transition workshop?
We have different agencies that come in and talk about different options for students as they age through the program. Some of our students get services through twenty-one. So again, that resource fair and that transition fair is real important for families and for students to make connections and know what they have out there.
So again, all this valuable information is in our newsletter and I just wanted to highlight that because every month it's so powerful. And, and I know in our busy world, we don't always take the time, but there's some good information there. And I would like the public to know that, starting Tuesday, January twenty-first, we have our budget hearings. And those, that too is in the newsletter, all those dates and times. So we look, we look forward to that, we've been working hard on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. The board chair report. First order of business, I would like to appoint Mrs. Follenback as board parliamentarian. And then I have subcommittee requests that I will pass out. If you could complete those and return those to me at your earliest convenience. Not everybody's going to get everything they want, but we will do the best we can. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion and possible action portion of our agenda. Exhibit A personnel, I need a motion to approve Exhibit A personnel's certified, non-certified appointments, resignations, and leaves of absences as of December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. I see that we, we have a math teacher who's resigned, is that a position that we will be replacing?
Yeah, we are going to post a position, but the math teacher taught AP Statistics. And so we have been working on a virtual AP program to cover that AP Statistics class. So, but yes, the position will be posted.
Mr. Bell?
I assume we have our guidance counselor also resigned. And now we start into the late part of the year or second semester, they say for graduates, or for seniors. There's a lot going on in that area for those students, getting ready for college, applying to schools. What are we going to do to handle that in the interim?
We're, we are posting the position and, and we do have a plan. You want to share what you've been working with, Mr. Shigru?
Mr. Shigru is, we've got the position posted and he's going through applications. And he'll be interviewing candidates that he feels would be a viable opportunity for us to work with. And we do have needs there. And so some of the interests lie in bilingual areas and things like that. So we'll be looking to try to see if we can find someone. It is hard, the middle of the year, to try to, to find someone, but we have it posted. And I don't have the specifics, Mr. Shigru would probably be able to better answer what he has in place for what's going to happen to the students while we try to find someone to fill it.
If we could get that information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Um, I just want to say how happy I am to see all of these positions coming up for the Winter Percussion and Winter Guard. This is a really phenomenal program that we have at our high school and I'm glad that we are supporting it and that we are hiring people to let them have this winter program. So, good work.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? And that's everyone, thank you. Need a motion to approve monthly reports, revised budget position dated November thirty, two thousand and nineteen, purchase resolution D dash seven-two-nine, and requests for budget transfers.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for a point of clarification, these reports were brought to operations. We had some discussion over some of the legal, it's portrayed in the minutes. And it's captured on approving this entire financial package.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Exhibits C, gifts and donations, I need a motion to accept gifts and donations, PTO Exhibit B, in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a thank you.
Yes.
Definitely echo that. Okay, all in favor? And that's everyone, thank you. Okay, Celtic Energy is next on our agenda and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you. I am happy to report that I have seen a draft of the MOU, spoke with Bill Condon today about it, and we will be bringing that to facilities and operations subcommittees next month.
Perkins Grant, I need a motion to approve the Perkins Five Grant in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to come on in how detailed it was and congratulations, it was a lot of work.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? And that's everyone. Okay, policies for approval. I need a motion to approve policy seventeen-hundred, possession of firearms on school property prohibited, and eighteen-hundred, animals on school property.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bell?
I've always had an issue with this policy because of the way Connecticut statute's written, I think it's poorly written. Just continuing to make that comment.
And you're referring to policy seventeen-hundred, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, policy for second review, sixty-one forty-six, graduation requirements. Any discussion?
Question, hold on a minute, I'll just look at the page. On C page, what the heck are mastery-based one-credit and assured skill and experience, and assured current experiences? Just for clarification.
So, those were voted in when we talked about the graduation requirements last year. For clarification, the state requires us to have one mastery-based credit afforded to students. We clearly defined as a high school team when we reviewed the statute to see what we can and can't do and what other districts were doing across the state. In lieu of doing the full portfolio type of requirement that we've talked about in the past, I'm trying to come up with the name of it, does anyone remember what it is? That cul, the big culminating activity that kids were doing.
Capstone.
Capstone, thank you, sorry. In lieu of that, we decided we were going to break down the credit so that some of it could be earned through either testing out of certain requirements based on state assessments, through intervention processes where students set a goal because they didn't make a certain criteria or they're setting a goal for themselves to better themselves in that academic area because of their aspirations. And the other piece ties into internship opportunities, community service opportunities. So we're building in access to connectivity to community organizations as well as resourcing the academics to combine a one-credit from starting with freshman year or being able to attain it all the way through senior year.
Okay.
Is that clearer?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bell?
Mr. Corporal, on the, in that area of mastery-based, how do we stand with regard to internships in, here in this community in New Milford, and reaching, reaching out to the community?
So, that's a great question. I have a meeting set up with the Economic Development Commission head. And we're going to be talking about, I'm going to fill her in on what's going on with Perkins, the programming we currently have, and talking about some organizations that she has connectivity with. And then, as you know, I'm working with the resource person from the Workforce Investment Board, Kathy Wad, who you met through Committee on Learning. We're working on the manufacturing opportunities with Med and Still. And we're working with the state over the next year to see what other opportunities are available to our kids as extensions of pathways in our programming that we currently have that they could support us with so that some of the liability, some of the things that normally, that the Workforce Investment Board is picking up on, is the state going to partner with them and afford us that lack of liability, so to speak, that we normally would take on in our insurance to afford opportunities to kids in some areas that maybe would carry more liability than others. So, we have a year to work that through. At that point, Perkins Grant will change and we'll be able to write in some of, like, I think the transportation costs and some of the other costs that we might incur in, into the grant at that time. But it's nice that the state is giving us a grace period to work through those community partnerships that we've been wanting to build for a while. So, that's what we're doing right now, working in conjunction with the high school.
Right.
Okay, just as a suggestion, the Chamber of Commerce in town is very busy and active.
And I know that Mr. Shigru has gone and will continue to go and advocate, so.
Yeah, but that's a good resource.
Thank you. Okay.
Willing to work.
A point on that, actually, because you raise a good point, this is the outreach and the community relationships has been a discussion for a while, we've been hearing it. And at some point, we may perhaps have just a separate agenda item on Committee on Learning, exactly a complete rundown of what we're doing, how we're doing. And just a reminder of, to the community and also this board, I think it would be a good, a good visit to see where we're at. It's part of our curriculum, we believe in it. So what are we doing, how are we doing it, and how are we going to do it better? And what resources do we need to make that happen?
Sure.
Thank you, good.
Anyone else? Okay, field trip report. Any discussion? Tammy?
Once again, I'm really happy to see that we are providing these opportunities for our students because they are enriching and they're very, very important. And a lot of them take our students outside of our school to visit certain businesses and provide opportunities that they oftentimes would not get on their own. So, I'm really glad that the board supports these. Point of clarification, though, Dr. Longo, the SMS trip to Lake Compounds, the student cost, it says ten dollars, PTO pays the balance, PTO pays ten dollars and families pay the balance. So I just want to be, it, that's, it's switched.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
If you want, the total cost was the student, it looks like it's thirty-three dollars per student, that's minus the ten dollars for PTO. Okay?
Any other comments? Okay, relocation of administrative offices. Dr. Parker, would you like to make an opening statement?
Well, I, I just appreciated being able to present the idea and the conversations that I've had with Ms. Belko regarding looking at Seren Noble and the possibility. We had a good conversation in both subcommittees about revisiting also the projections for our enrollment and bringing that back as an item that we need to address. And, and Ms. Belko and I had that conversation as well, as far as projection and, and, you know, our, the last thing we would want to do is, is take up space in a school and then have to move again. And so it's, it's a very serious conversation. It's, it's serious also because we, we do need to look at options. And again, I, I don't know if I was able to, to tell everybody, I was going to wait till tonight to let you know that we had another leak this morning and they have to shut the boiler down in order to repair it and it was very cold today. And so they didn't do it today, the plumber's going to try to take care of it tomorrow. And I'm hoping it, it is a quick fix, but it, it just underlines my concerns about the Ellis Building, the Lilis Building, not Ellis Building, Lilis Building, yes?
Yes, this came to us at both subcommittees and I, I appreciate the information. This is on for discussion, there's no action. I think that we need to begin this discussion for two reasons. I think it's a, a safety concern at Lilis. And it's a matter of time. And I also think that we're moving into budget and there could be, should this board move in some direction or another? There's budgetary implications and those numbers can fluctuate tremendously. So I'm hopeful that, you know, I appreciate the tour of walking through and getting more of a visual because many of my questions were answered. So, I, I appreciate that. I would hope that we continue this discussion. I hope that we collaborate with the town on a larger plan and, and see where we're going to go with this. Whether it's relocating into, you know, Seren Noble or anywhere else. I think it's time that we need to have this conversation and put the numbers to it as well. So, I'm not sure what the plan is moving forward with budget, where you're going. But I'm sure you may be looking for board guidance in some direction. So, just want to see what the plan is.
Okay, well, at this point, we're planning as if we are in the Lilis Building and.
Which we are.
Right.
Right.
So it's, that's how we would plan for the budget. But, but, because it's, if, if we were going to make this move, you know, it's all just a matter of getting it started and we don't know what that timeframe would be.
Correct.
Because we haven't started the, I guess, really, the nuts and bolts of it all. It's more just been conversational and, and is it even a possibility? And so, as we're looking at the budget, we are planning as if we're going to be in the Lilis Building for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
However, we are also planning that if things happened in the meantime that would allow us to start utilizing that fund that we budget for to help support the move, then we've covered our bases as far as that money is there. It's not as if, it would be the following year that we would see the savings and not having to support the utilities, the upkeep, the repairs at the Lilis Building.
Okay, so you don't see any budgetary?
Not at this time.
Okay.
It's, I mean, we can't, I, I can't project for something that may or may not happen. I have to plan as if we're, we're in the Lilis Building. However, the contingency plan would be if we weren't, then we would want to utilize that.
Oh, sure, I, I misunderstood. I thought that some of the conversation had a budgetary impact and that's why we were having the conversation at the subcommittees as well.
Well, maybe I don't understand the, the question. I, 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 I don't understand.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I got it.
First of all, thank you very much for the tour because it was very, very helpful. Right. And I, I also did read through the minutes, when it, both sets of minutes when this was discussed. And thank you for also considering other options so that as we move forward, we really are figuring out where the best place would be to move administration. I, I don't think any of us would argue that we don't need to move where we are. We're, there's just a lot of problems there and there have been for a while and it's truly not fair to the people at central office that they are dealing with these leaks and these problems with mold and everything else. So, I think this is, is a great start and I'm interested in seeing this, you know, us move through this. As I looked at the savings and costs, I did have some questions, but I'm not going to get into them because I, I know that this is not necessarily a concrete document, however. In remembering when we closed Pettibone and the discussions that were happening about cost savings and cost avoidance and it, it created a lot of controversy and confusion for our public. So when we start to put stuff like this out here, I think we need to be very transparent and we also need to be accurate so that the public completely understands as we move through budget, maybe not this budget cycle, but the next one, what this actually means to our budget. Because people will start to say, well, then you don't need a million dollars, we can cut a million dollars from them. They start to say things like that, not truly understanding what it means to, you know, what we're, we're really saving versus avoiding. So I just want to be very careful and cautious about that and putting stuff like this out there because people take it and run without context.
Right, and that, and maybe that's what I was trying to say, that we, we tried to initially and, and put down what we, what our operating expenses are right now, what we would project, that the relocation operating.
And swap it out.
Right.
That's where it's going.
That it would be a, a share for what would happen this year. And then any cost savings would happen the next year when we didn't have the Lilis Building. But then there could also be projected capital reserve savings that we've, we've budgeted for long-range, the cupola, the renovations, the, the foundation, the, you know, all of, of those expenses. So those would be initial savings off of our capital plan as well, so maybe that's.
But there are other things might come up that we can't think about here.
That we haven't, haven't even.
That will cause a fluctuation in our, in our budget. And so, you know, I just don't want to put anything out there that people go, oh, well, according to this document, you're saving a million dollars, when that's really, may not be the case.
That's exactly what I was going, the budgetary implications.
I, I'm going to agree with Tammy there, that there has to be some caution here because the savings that were promised to the public in the Pettibone didn't, didn't come to fruition. And for instance, the capital savings, it, it just gets transferred to the town. That doesn't make the public very happy because then it's like, what happened? Why is this transferred to the town? And that undermines budget support for the Board of Education, which is probably not a good thing to do.
Any questions?
No, so again, back to this, this is items of information, we'll keep it status quo, budget-wise. My, my questions regarding, you know, us coming into budget season, where capital expenditures, where we're going, that kind of a thing. And also, very much in line with your point, Tammy, is that when we start having building conversations, we need to be very clear about what we're doing, even though some of these expenditures are, you know, they, they're, they're, they have been pulled together and as we move forward, they might be a little bit more detailed. I think we need to be very careful with those. And so, I, I appreciate it, but I didn't know if you had any plans of moving this conversation prior to budget? That's all I was going for.
I think, and also to your point, collaboration with the town is imperative. But the town's involved, the mayor's office is involved.
And we wanted to, to bring the discussion to the board to see if it was even something that, that you wanted us to move forward on, having the conversations with the town and.
I think that's clear.
Didn't want to do that without the support.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to budget drivers. Any discussion there?
No, I appreciate all of the feedback for budget information. You know, you're handed, and especially for new board members, you're handed a budget book and there's a lot there. And sometimes, no matter how long you've been on the board, when you look at some of those costs and those itemizations, they're, you know, they're, they're daunting. They're, and not all of them are going to make the cut and some of them will, some of them won't, and it's a bouncing act. But I do appreciate all the information brought forward on those to give us a little bit more insight prior to you coming out and releasing your budget.
Thank you.
And any board member had an opportunity to reach out and also make comments at various meetings if they are looking for something as well.
All right, need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Eileen, that was you.
And that's everyone.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great break.
Have a great holiday, Merry Christmas.